Good evening. Well, welcome to the City Commission meeting of April eighteenth. We'll open the meeting with invocation.
Chase, would you all pray for me? Lord heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this time that we can come together to serve our community and to serve you, Lord. We pray your direction on our decisions as we try to make the best decision for our community. We pray your blessings on the young people that are joining us tonight, that you'll just keep them safe and have your blessings upon them. Lord, we just thank you for this time that we have together and we lift this up in your Son Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Chase. Next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Mrs. Corbin's third grade class from Oil Hill Elementary. You guys want to join us to say the pledge, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, yeah.
Come on up. You get set up. Why don't you tell us your name and what you like about El Dorado?
My name is Bryson Cook, and I like the McDonald Stadium and the trails that lead to the dam.
My name is Riley Bump, and I like the Grizzly Bowling Island here in El Dorado, Kansas.
My name is Maddie Johnson, and I like the El Dorado Swimming Pool.
My name is Lucy Harris, and I like it because I have a lot of friends that live here.
My name is Chase Pond, and I like it because all my friends live here, too.
My name is Lucas Warner, and I like fishing.
My name is Carter Walker, and I like Brahms.
My name is Julian Perez, and I like the YMCA pool.
My name is Colton Meele, and I like the YMCA pool.
My name is Chris Jenner, and I like the YMCA program.
Here we go. Thank you. Well, let's turn around here, and we'll all get ready to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody down to join us, remove your hats, and we'll... Ready to begin? Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you to Mrs. Corbin's third grade class at Oil Hill. Next on our agenda is a proclamation for Arbor Day. I understand there's someone from the tree board present to speak to the commission.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the tree board, I'm Matt Guthrie. We are here to, well, first of all, accept the proclamation for the Arbor Day celebration. We've already had most of our part done for it. There was a... Every year we have the poster-making contest for the fifth grade classes. We'd already... We chose our winner back in the end of January.
Her name was Veda Goucher.
Was who?
Veda Goucher.
Veda Goucher, from where?
Fifth grade at Grandview.
Grandview. It was very nice. It was one of the... We probably had a... The guys were saying about the toughest time in years of the art, the quality of art that there was. So, we were really pleased with that. Who won the... I forgot. Who won the state? Was it Garden City?
I don't know the name of the person.
I know it was like somebody from... A child from Garden City won. And then it goes on to the Nationals and becomes part of the Arbor Day stamp. Is that right?
Yes.
So, that's kind of our big thing through the year. We have our... We're going to plant a tree at which park? I forgot.
Rice.
Rice Park.
We'll celebrate Arbor Day this year on Thursday at 2:00 p.m. at Rice Park. We'll plant a tree there with Veda, and if you all would like to join us.
Thursday at 2:00 p.m.?
Yes.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Rain or shine?
Rain or shine.
Good.
Well, what did we say? We were going to do it in the gym if...
Probably do it at Grandview Gym if it rains.
Right.
But I would be planting the tree rain or shine, but we'll be having our celebration in the gym at Grandview if it rains, so.
Rice Park, you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I would invite everybody to join to begin if they can.
The kids will walk from Grandview to Rice Park, and we thought that would be a great place since they kind of helped pick that park, and then we'll be planting a tree there. She will have to do that, so.
That'll be a good day.
Yes.
Mark your calendars.
Please do. Is there anything you want to... I know you last week, or two meetings ago, that you started, and you want to start talking about boards that you guys were members of. I'm here to kind of talk to you about that also if... So, please do, Jeff.
Certainly welcome wherever you'd like to share.
Well, we've... I've been on the board for just a little over a year now, and we've started to make some changes in the board, as in goals and missions and things that we'd like to do as a board. We kind of brought it down to the... Basically, the ordinance and what Tree City USA requires of us to be a part of their organization. And one of them was is the having the board. The other is is having the tree care ordinance, which is something we have, but over the next couple of months, we're going to reevaluate as a tree board. Just kind of bring... We're trying to get rid of, as I like to say, that you can't park your pig on Main Street ordinances, that things that we don't use, the things that we're not, that just don't apply anymore. And that's kind of a big one that we're working on also. We're also going to work with the college and the high school as soon as they hire a new media teacher. We'd like to do some public service announcements for YouTube, even for Channel Seven if at all possible, on the bore awareness, different things like that. So, we're really trying to rejuvenate the board and try to really get kind of back to what it was intended to be.
That's great.
And I've heard really good responses from the longtime members. They seem to be happy. I've had a few that were kind of ready to step down, and I think that they're planning on staying on for a little longer, see what we can do. So, we're really excited up there.
That's good. Well, it is great. Thank you for that.
The one thing that I will say, this is going to be a bad... But I want to just want to bring it up. Part of being part of Tree City USA is a funding issue. That's $2 per capita that goes to that... For that. And I know that we spend that much in her salaries and, you know, taking down trees and whatnot, and I think it's kind of a, you know, way to look at it.
It's everything. It's taking down, caring for.
And as a board, we would like, you know, if you guys think about it, budget time, maybe, you know, let us have some of that, our own discretion that we could use to do some stuff that we'd like. But, you know, it's not great, but, you know, I got you. I got your ears.
Sure.
But other than that, we're really starting to make some strides. You know, we're coming into our summer period where we don't meet as much, but once we hit the fall, we're ready to hit the ground and start doing some interactive stuff and get the, you know, the organization out there.
Great.
That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
Tabitha, do we still have that tree program that we've had in years past?
Yes.
Tree coupons, yes.
Yes, we do.
Going on right now.
Okay. Want to maybe somebody to let know because that's a really good program.
You've got our ear in the camera. Do you want to say something about it?
You can pick those coupons up here at the window up on the rec side, and basically here in town, you can redeem them, and they'll pay for up to $25 off of a tree to be planted here for city residents. It's a good time to do it. Southern has their trees in right now, and they were having 50% off, so 50% off plus 25%.
My wife brings home a truckload every Saturday. Not just trees, but...
And that's throughout the year? Or is it a season for those coupons?
I think we do it in the spring and in the fall, but I don't know when the deadline is. I don't really...
So, don't delay.
Correct.
Now's the best... Now's a great time. Not the best time, but it's a great time to plant a tree.
Last weekend would have been better, right before the rains.
I would say the one thing is is that make sure when you pick your trees that you pick off of the preferred tree list that we have.
And the coupon, they have that right up there as you pick your coupon.
And they can... And will they find that preferred tree list online also on our website?
Yes, I believe so.
I believe it is, but we'll check and make sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there's the booklets right there with the coupon, too.
Okay, perfect.
And Southern's has...
They state to that, or they pay attention to it?
They try to, but not always. They get some other things. And it's more than just Southern. You can go to Walmart or the other nursery, Prairie Blossom, either one.
Yeah, Prairie Blossom, yeah.
That's cool.
Either place, any place.
Great program.
Yeah, yes.
Good work on bringing some new life to the board. That's exciting.
Doing what we can.
Yeah. Well, it's proclamation, and I will be happy to read this proclamation, and I have a copy for you once I read it, since you guys can take with you.
Okay.
All right. Proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce to the erosion... Trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic viability of business area, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of El Dorado has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways, now therefore be resolved that I, Vince Haynes, Mayor of the City of El Dorado, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2016 as Arbor Day. Arbor Day in the City of El Dorado, and I urge citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our community's forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being present of present and future generations. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand to cast the official seal of El Dorado to be affixed the 18th day of April 2016. So, we have a copy for you.
Mayor, the coupons are good, the 21st through the 3rd... March 21st through May 31st.
Okay.
And we usually try to do it in the spring and the fall, but for sure.
So, it's the spring.
Just spring. All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Wow, here we go. Next on our agenda is personal appearances. Kurt Zeeman. Can you talk the fire... Fire engine dedication we did just a moment ago?
Oh, missed that one. Made the last one, but I missed this one. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Commissioner, staff, people in the audience. Kurt Zeeman, El Dorado Police Department here to give you the annual report for the police department. I've got our department motto up there first. The department motto, "Community Safety, Partners in Service," states the essential purpose of the El Dorado Police Department. The department protects the rights of all persons within its jurisdiction to be free from criminal attack, be secure in their positions, possessions, and to live in peace. Department commitment, the El Dorado Police Department is committed to providing a safe, livable community with a high quality of life by maintaining order, protecting persons and property with equal and consistent enforcement of the law. I found this little picture, and I've actually got it up over our time clock so all the officers see it. Every time they clock in and out, your job gives you authority, your behavior gives you respect, and that's kind of the mantra we try to live by. This is a department organizational chart. We are authorized for 28 sworn officers, and I'm happy to announce that as of right now, we are full staff for the first time in about three years. Knock on wood. Hopefully, we can stay that way, but it's been a long time coming, but have one officer in the academy now, just hired an experienced officer last Monday, and he's out on the street getting trained right now, so things are looking up. I just put some roles of the police officer. We have a code of ethics that we live by. We strive to be professional in everything we do. There's a lot of knowledge involved in being a police officer. The public expects you to be a law expert, which none of us are attorneys. They expect you to be a counselor. Sometimes they expect you to be superhuman and have all the answers. We don't always have all the answers, but I like to tell the officers that don't ever tell anybody there's nothing we can do for them. I mean, if we can't help them, we're going to try to point them in the right direction. Some of the duties and responsibilities, protect life and property, enforce state and local laws, patrol commercial businesses and residential areas, traffic enforcement, and investigating and accurate reporting of crimes, making arrests, community policing, educating the public, and continued training. Calls for service, we deal civil disputes and disturbances, welfare checks, animal complaints, and a lot of miscellaneous stuff. You couldn't begin to imagine some of the calls that we take, so. Some of the equipment used on patrol, you know, semi-automatic handgun, electronic control device, OC spray, expandable baton, patrol rifle, patrol radio, ballistic vest, wearable video device. That is body cans you hear a lot about. I'm proud to say that the El Dorado Police Department has had body cans since 2009. We're in the process of trying to upgrade those. We're actually... I've got an officer working on a federal grant to try to pay for at least half of those, so we're hoping we get that grant. In the patrol vehicle, we have traffic radar, a digital camera, in-car video system, emergency lights and sirens. Incidentally, we've had in-car video systems in our patrol cars for probably, if not 20, 25 years, so we've had video a long time. They started out with being a cassette player in the back of the trunk that was about this big, but it's all digital now, and it goes on a little memory card that you download into the computer, so we've had that stuff a long, long time. Talk a little bit about our criminal investigation section. That's led by a lieutenant detective, and there's a detective sergeant, two other detectives. We'll probably soon put another detective in that division. They investigate major felonies, do a lot of narcotics investigations, child forensic interviews, crime scene investigations, death investigation, maintain the evidence room and testifying in court and preparation. Some of the crime scene procedures, they secure the crime scene, identify witnesses, accurate note-taking, photography, collection of evidence, and diagramming. Importance of evidence, in general, the success or failure of a criminal prosecution usually depends upon the evidence presented to the court, so we take what we do very seriously. We try to obtain all the evidence we can. We'll go over the crime stats for 2015, starting with the Group A offenses. Arson, there was no change. We had two arson reports. Assaults were up by about 12%. Burglaries up 6%, counterfeit forgery took a big jump. Criminal damage up about 8%. Drug offenses were down 12%. Embezzlement, down 40%. Fraud, down 17%. Homicide, down zero or 100%. Kidnapping, we had one for the year, and that's down from the previous year. Larceny is down 6%. Motor vehicle theft, down 4%. Pornography was no change. Robbery, no change. Sex offense forced was up by about 53%. Sex offense non-forced, no change. Stolen property was down 62%. Weapon law violation was up 67%. Group B offenses, all other offenses were down about 3%. Bad checks, no change. Disorderly conduct was up 21%. DUI minus 3%. Drunkenness down... Or up 20%. And family offenses, nonviolent, were down 75%. Liquor law violations, down 38%. Runaways was up 66, and trespassing down by 14%. Traffic accident data, we had... We assisted in two fatalities in El Dorado in 2015. The highway patrol worked both of those, but we assisted with those cases. There were 59 hit-and-runs, 48 injury accidents, and 249 non-injury accidents. The El Dorado Police Department investigated 2,340 cases in 2015. In addition to these cases investigated, the police department responded to over 14,531 other calls for service. Notices appearing in court and warrants, there were 3,201 notices appearing in court issued last year. 28 warrants were issued by the municipal court, and officers served 334 warrants in 2015. 447 NTAs for off-truck route were written in 2015, and as of March 31st of this year, we've already written 215, so we're writing a lot of trucks off the truck route. Community activities, I've got a few photos here. It was a goal to, you know, we've always had to work all these activities, but I wanted to get us to where we're involved in the activities. This was at the Monarch River Festival. Officers were doing a booth about child safety seats. We entered a car, and we're motorcycling the downtown car show. Participated in the traveling wall of the 911 ceremony. These next few slides were from National Night Out 2015. We had a citywide National Night Out party down at East Park. This is Lieutenant Detective Maggie Schreiber and Kenneth DeMott having sack races with some kids.
I don't see any hair under him. I do under her.
Yeah, that's a neat picture. I took that even, so. It's Officer Scribner, one of the booths, one of the activities for the kids. Red Devils were nice enough to cook the burgers and hot dogs. I believe that's the mayor right there. And the mayor, incidentally, was gracious enough to get up and give a little speech before we did some of the activity, or actually before we ate, so we appreciate you doing that, Mayor. Officer Shively swinging with some kids. And that's food line, and it went all the way around the back of that shelter house. Pretty good turnout, and we plan on doing it again this year. National Night Out's always the second Tuesday in August. I think that's August 2nd this year, so we're planning on doing it again. Again, their kids are in line, some of the activity booths we had. These are all the officers that participated in that event. Some recognitions, NPO Kenneth DeMott received a life-saving award. He actually... He actually went on a call, I believe it was last May, to a local apartment complex, and while he was dealing with that call, he heard screaming for help from an adjacent apartment, and he'd get in there, and a toddler was choking on, I believe it was a hard candy of some type, and he was able to dislodge that, and we gave him the award in September. For whatever reason, that didn't get on our Facebook page, and that picture was found the other day, so Maggie Schreiber put it on our Facebook page, and KSN came down today, did a story on it, actually reunited Officer DeMott with that child and the family, so there may be a clip on KSN tonight. I'm not sure when it's going to air, but it's good work. Proud of our people. Some other recognitions, of course, you were all present for that. We got the AAA Gold Traffic Safety Award for the second consecutive year. Continuing education and training. The officers go through a lot of training throughout the year. Each officer has to get 40 hours in-service training each year to maintain their law enforcement certification. These photos here are actually defensive tactics training. Chad Young, he's the Krav Maga instructor, certified instructor, and everybody was required to do that. It was eight hours of training, and some of our staff did that, too. Pretty intense training. Chad wears you out. We're proud of the fact that we have a lot of certified instructors in our department on various areas, so we don't have to, you know, always send people out of town or out of state for training. We have two police firearms instructors. Actually, we have three. I'm one, have been for... Since 95, but I've kind of bowed out of that and let the other two handle it. We have two TASER instructors. We have two ASP expandable baton instructors. Have one Krav Maga defensive tactic instructor. Have one traffic Doppler radar and lidar instructor. And these people are able to train the whole department annually on those kind of things. It's pretty nice. In 2015, officers of the El Dorado Police Department have attended a total of 3,290 hours of training. Some specialized certifications, we have one police polygraph examiner. We have one commercial truck inspector. We have one certified drug K-9 handler. We had one officer graduate from KU Emergent Leader Academy in 2015, and Captain Chad Young just graduated from the KU Certified Public Manager Program in January, February?
November.
No... November. Is that... Okay, that was 15 then. All right. Time flies. Tabitha was actually in that class with Chad, so they graduated together. New projects, I know you heard us talk about last year about the Brazos Electronic Ticketing Solution. It was implemented in 2015, is working wonderfully. That's been a really good addition. And just a reminder what that is, that's a handheld unit the officer write the traffic citations on. Instead of handwriting it, you can scan the driver's license. It puts all that data on there. Court costs, fines are all figured into that. They come at the end of the shift, put a cradle, it downloads it into the computer system. Court clerks don't have to enter tickets anymore, and you don't have the problem of not being able to read the officer's handwriting, because some officers have pretty poor handwriting. And occasionally, their math would be in error, and they put a fine wrong, so that's all figured in. Another relatively new project for us, I failed to list. The police department took on the code enforcement this year. Sarah Haggen actually came to us in June of last year. Sarah graduated from the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center in January of this year, and she just finished her field training on the streets, so she is a full-fledged police officer. She's going to be doing code enforcement in a police uniform. She's armed, just like the rest of us, and has a patrol car, so she... Her title is patrol officer now, but her assignment is code enforcement, but we're able to use her for other things, including court bailiff on Mondays, so. And that's all I have. I'd like to thank you all for your support, and I would entertain any questions if you had any.
Any questions for Chief?
Thanks for everything you all do.
Thanks for your support.
You bet, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Next on our agenda is public comment. Anybody from the audience wishing to address the commission? Yes. As you come up, I'll read the rules of engagement, so to speak. Each citizen, now state your name and address before making comments. There are no residency requirements. Each citizen will have five minutes to present his or her comments. An extension of time, if necessary, may be approved by the commission. Comments or questions to be directed to the City Commission. City citizens will follow decorum policy. Debate or argument between parties in the audience is not allowed. Certain legal issues may not be discussed, and violation of this public comment policy could result in citizen being removed from the room. So, with that, please, state your name and...
That's a hard one to follow, though. My name's Sheri Maybree, and I live at 8090. My name's Sheri Maybree, and I live at eight oh nine Oak. And it's more of a question than, I was here when we were discussing the Oak Street Project, and I know you guys went ahead, and if I understand correctly, you approved it and then gave us twenty days to get enough signatures? And I believe the group got the signatures, but no problem. But I was under the, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that it would be brought up again to, to, to discuss what they found with the, the signatures that we brought to protest it. And I was wanting some input on that, because I've never seen anything in a paper, or never heard anything more about it.
Sure, sure. Thank you for coming out, and we did receive report that the, that the petition, there were two, two conditions for it to satisfy. Satisfied one, but not the other, I believe, and I think we have, we have requested some double-checking on the validity of signatures and making sure that that's all in order. And I don't know that I have a report to give you today myself on that, but I know that's the direction we gave staff, was to do that. Any other, anybody else have something to add?
I got it. The signatures being validated is the last I heard of it.
So will there be something that will be on the agenda again after you receive the validation of all the signatures and everything?
Validation of signatures will probably come up in a, in a manager or staff report, rather than necessarily an agenda item at this point.
Correct.
So how does the public find out about it? I mean.
Ahead of the meeting will be, could be a challenge. I appreciate that.
If it, since this process has gone on, and there's been a petition for, a petition against, discussion amongst you all initiating and going through with that process, if you desire, we would, it would probably be appropriate to send a letter, at least to those residents, notifying of what direction.
I think that would be appropriate, since we've got, we've kinda have two parallel issues going on, that each resident can letter when we have everything validated and confirmed.
Well, I know there was an article in the paper about the lady that's the director or something of the handicap houses, and she was wearing it, but other than that, I hadn't heard anything, so I, a letter would be very appreciated, you know? I'm sure everybody would appreciate it. That's how we knew about it to begin with, you sent letters to everybody.
I think that's, I think that's a good follow-up, is to close that loop, and as you know what we find out.
Okay, I appreciate that very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the commission? Sir?
Do we, I mean, that's on the sales tax, do we?
There's gonna be a public hearing for that. Sure, thanks. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which would be consent agenda. In that would be your minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at those. On the meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if the consent agenda is presented, be approved?
Second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same thing, pose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is the Sales Tax Committee Recommendations. I believe we have Andy Waller, the Chairperson of the Sales Tax Committee, to, to give a report on that.
Good evening. Sorry, if you, hold on just a second, I'm gonna say something to introduce them real quick. Mr. Mayor, question, in 2015, we collected two-million-six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents in sales tax. Of that, we, we took out six-hundred-thousand for street rehabilitation, one-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for property tax reduction, and fifty-thousand for economic development. After that, we were left with a total of six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for excess sales tax, and we also had thirteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents left over from previous years. That made a total of six-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and eighty-six cents for the Sales Tax Committee to allocate this year. This evening, Mr. Waller will be providing you with the recommendations from the Sales Tax Committee. The commission can choose to accept or reject those this evening with a motion, and should you accept them, you will be fully vetting them in the budget process. So tonight, you would just be accepting them for consideration during the budget.
Okay, Tabitha? As you all know, it's been a long journey to get to this point, but we finally have some recommendations for you, and we even have some stipulations on our recommendations. Our committee has met several times, we've done extensive research, due diligence, asked a lot of questions. We feel like we have some good recommendations for you, so I think what I'll do is go down the list of everything that we recommend, and then open it up for questions on how we reach those recommendations. So additional property tax reduction, we recommended that we go through with that for two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-six dollars, fifty-six cents. We, we recommended not to put anything back in savings. We felt like it would be good to go ahead and invest that money rather than save it. Ball fields, there are some needed repairs on the ball fields, and a need for a bathroom, additional bathroom facility. We weren't able to give the full recommended or requested amount, but we did come up with twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twelve cents. Disc golf was a very hot topic, and a lot of time was spent on that. The original request was for a nine-hole course. We weren't okay with that. We want to go all out and build something really unique and spectacular that's gonna bring people to El Dorado, not necessarily be a, a small community thing, but something that draws in events and draws in visitors to our town. So we would like to allocate sixty-five-thousand with a stipulation of an eighteen-hole course. If, if we can't do an eighteen-hole course, or if we can't find the necessary land, the necessary land for that, we're gonna recommend that it goes back to the next year's Sales Tax Committee. McDonald's Stadium, we recommend thirty-five-thousand dollars for structure repairs, miscellaneous work to the bathroom, locker rooms. We did not recommend going through with the Hall of Fame Garage. So thirty-five-thousand is what we recommend for that line item. Downtown development plan, we opted to not fund that this year. Sidewalks on Sixth, from Orchard to Star, we opted not to fund that this year. Solar lighting for the engineering building and upgrading lights for the walking paths, we recommended to go through with that for seventy-seven-thousand dollars. Of that seventy-seven-thousand, approximately eighteen-thousand was for the engineering building to upgrade to solar, to take it basically off the grid. We felt like there was a really good return on investment there, and fifty-nine-thousand was for the walking path upgrades. Request was made by the police department for a new storage building, short on space. The original request was for seventy-three-thousand-thirteen dollars, which was the cost of the building. We felt like if we're gonna, if we're gonna upgrade old buildings with new technology, we need to build our new buildings with new technology. So we upped that to eighty-five-thousand, which they thought would cover the cost of putting solar energy there, so basically it would be off the electrical grid. So eighty-five-thousand for that. The arena, we felt like sometimes you have to take a risk to hit a home run. You know, there's a potential for, for that to be a really big thing for El Dorado, but there's also a potential of, of funding it and it's built somewhere else. So we are going to propose that we fund it for thirty-thousand, but if it's not built in El Dorado, that thirty-thousand is to be returned to the city. The Elks Lodge, we recommend thirty-thousand dollars to help with the fund to build their new building. Bradford Library, we opted not to fund that. And we opted to fund the facade grants for three-thousand dollars. And now I'd like to open it up for questions and discussions on any of the items.
Can I, on the, this might be to you too, Scott, is the sixty-five-thousand for the disc golf course, how would it play into the partnership that we're foreseeing hopefully happening with Rotary and them funding part of that project?
The, the biggest chunk of that right there is the construction of the paths, so the concrete sidewalks and bridge, a, a new bridge, and then some safety enhancements to the existing bridges. Really, the, the chains and the T-boxes and, and all of that were around thirteen-thousand dollars, if I recall correctly.
I got you.
And that was with us doing that work for the thirteen-thousand, it wasn't bringing anybody in?
I think that was just buying the equipment, you know, and with T-boxes.
So that would change it.
We did, I missed a part there. We did recommend that this work be completed by a contractor, so it's professionally done, done quickly, done on schedule, so the city can focus on other projects that they already have going on. And there's also available night upgrades, that we think hopefully the city would throw some more money at it and upgrade it to glow-in-the-dark structures, so there's an ability to have either night tournaments or the public can use it at night, which would be really nice and unique. And there's some, there's a course in Emporia that draws thousands of visitors every year to their town for a big tournament. And Dan Davis on our committee knows of an individual that helped design that course, and he really wants to be a part of this. They're trying to develop their league, and he's willing to volunteer to help with the design of this course, and also to help gather volunteers and oversee the whole construction of it, so, for no charge whatsoever to the city. So I think there's some opportunity here, not only with volunteers lined up to help, but also we have a, a golf course already, an old golf course that's kinda set up with unique land and trees and elevation changes that I think is a unique opportunity that most cities don't have. Most cities don't have an old golf course to convert. They have a blank piece of land. We already have most of that in place, so I think it could be something really unique.
Is Augusta nine or eighteen?
Andy, on, on the Elks, it says contingent on attorney opinion.
Yes.
What, that was decided by the attorney?
We, we got a letter, and there's a lot of discussion about that letter from the attorney. There wasn't a clear yes, it's legal, or no, it's not legal.
Of course, it's a lawyer.
What was the letter in regards?
Maybe they wanted to draft a second letter. I don't know.
The legality of the letter into that, into that group.
Okay.
The memo's in the packet you received for the, for the meeting tonight, but Ashlyn is here with us this evening, and we can review that if you'd like or to.
Go for it.
Okay, so the question that was asked, or the issue that was presented, was the legality of allowing the excess sales tax to be donated to the Elks to construct a new building. And the real issue that came up is that you have to spend public funds for what's called a public purpose, and what that sort of involves is what's called the public purpose doctrine. And the unfortunate part of the public purpose doctrine is it's as vague as it sounds. It is literally, as long as you're spending these funds for the public purpose, then it's okay. And there has been a number of opinions issued by a number of different courts in Kansas about what the public purpose is, in that their decision is generally, we're not gonna lay out a list of factors for you to consider, we're just gonna say like, yes, this is a public purpose. So I think in the memo, on the second page, it kind of gives a list of the different decisions by different courts. The Supreme Court of Kansas upheld a direct loan and grant program to private businesses located a central city area, decided the need for redevelopment efforts as a public purpose. And there's other, there's kind of a list of different cases where the courts have found that a public purpose exists. So the reason that there wasn't a, a yes or a no, in terms of whether or not this is legal or not, is it's, it's really depends on what the actual funds are being used for, and, and what the argument is in terms of how it would benefit the public. So there, there's no rule against giving public funds to a private entity that's going to use it to benefit the community, but it, it really is just an interpretation, kind of an, an opinion call at that point.
So I'm assuming that the Sales Tax Committee was okay with what? Okay.
We were okay with doing it, and since we couldn't get a clear answer, yes, yes it's legal or no, it's, it's not. We thought we'd leave it up to the commission to decide that. Regardless, you're welcome.
The Elks is basically building a community building, right?
Basically.
Do you need any further?
Let's play for, for public hearing.
And would it be fair to ask you, I mean, what, what's the main reason why you all as a committee proposed supporting that?
We felt like with the, the large impact that they have on our community in a positive way, and with as many kids they help, as many programs they help fund, and they've been a staple of our community for a long time, we felt, you know, if we were gonna put thirty-thousand towards an arena, we felt like it was also important to support a, a nonprofit that's been in our town for a long time also, if they wanna build a new building. So that's why. Thank you.
Thank you.
When you added to the budgets for the police and for you, was there staff discussion? Where did the, where did the justification for adding to the budget, what was that? What was the justification for that number? You've added from, from, for example, the seventy-three thousand for police up to, up to eighty-five?
Yep.
What, help me understand where the, where the jump?
Okay, so the reason we did that is because there was a request from the engineering department to upgrade our old building to solar lighting, but there was a request to build a new building with old-style lighting, and we thought, you know, if we're gonna move our old buildings forward into the future, then everything we build from here on out needs to also have new technology. So we really wanted to help the police department as much as we could, but we also think that it needs to include new technology and keep it off the grid, because when we were doing cost analysis and return on investment numbers, solar lighting really pays for itself.
And Mayor, it was, it was more, it was solar panels to, to power the building?
Yep.
And the payback was five years with a twenty-five-year warranty on the panels? Something like that, if I recall?
So we feel like if you can get a five-year payback and a twenty-five-year warranty, you know, that, that works.
I guess my question is, who just, who, who estimate? I guess my question is, who just, who, who estimated or justified that it was a, what, a twelve thousand dollar add? To the project, where did some of that estimating come from?
Public Works.
Public Works?
Yeah, through a vendor, they'd gotten pricing on our building.
The request for solar lighting actually came from Public Works for the engineering and the bike paths. And so Brad's done most of that research for us.
Okay, I, where I'm headed is it not, what an arbitrary number that the sales tax committee tacked on?
We, we all felt as a committee that that was important.
Right, and I don't disagree, I mean, it's important to, to proceed, I just wanted to make sure that somebody just didn't pull twelve thousand dollars out of the air and say, add that to the project.
No, and there was several questions asked to make sure that was adequate.
Okay.
And they, um, we asked, and they, they believed it was adequate to do so.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, I did ask Brad, I mean, he had helped figure the, uh, the engineering one of that was the number he'd come up with to, to light this building, the solar.
Thanks. Any more questions for the, for Andy?
Not right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you committee too, Andy, good job.
Yep, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that on the ballfield repairs, uh, because they gave them the twenty thousand as opposed to the original amount requested, I spoke to Kevin today and with that twenty thousand, they'll be able to do the irrigation work that they proposed. And then any excess, they, they could be able to put towards flipping the fields if that becomes what you guys want to do as part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. But they'll, they won't be able to do the restrooms at this time with that amount.
That's at the ballfields, this twenty thousand is targeted towards, um, not, thirty-five for McDonald's, I see.
Right, the thirty-five thousand for McDonald's Stadium will be for locker rooms and some electrical repair work and, we got it.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of time before we move forward? The next part of this process is to, to go into public hearing. So at this point, we'll open up the, uh, open up the meeting for public hearing and have comments on, on the suggestions, recommendations from the sales tax committee.
I'm Roger Cutson, I'm here, I'm president of the El Dorado Elks Foundation. At our last taxed advisory board meeting, uh, the question came up about the benefit to the public for this building. The foundation will be owning the building and the lodge itself will be leasing from the, the foundation just as we are now leasing from a private entity. The, uh, public can use this building anytime, they, they can come in and rent it for weddings, uh, funeral dinners, birthday parties, um, that, we in fact, we just did that this past Saturday with a lady who's having her eightieth birthday. So it will be open to the public for their use. And uh, I know the police chief brought up the statistic about the reduction in, in drug arrests. I would like to think the Elks had a lot to do with, with our, our drug awareness programs over the years. And uh, we just would like to have this facility so we can continue our, our various programs. And uh, we need the larger facility and, and we also are trying to bring in some of the state meetings from our Kansas Elks Association. So I think, uh, there were just some misconceptions at that meeting that thought you had to be a member to use it and what have you, and that's not true.
Okay.
I got a question, would them changing it to a community building, it changes the way that that check reads, right? It would, it would move it towards approval?
Right, so, um, you know, and I read in here that I had, one of the, the way that the, the test is stated is, is that a governing body should use tax dollars in such a way that the direct beneficiaries of the spending are the local community. And so I think the initial concern was that if you had to be an Elks member, there are, I think, three qualifications um, in order to be an Elks member. Um, but I think, um, with the idea that there is no qualifications to use the building, you don't have to do any, you don't have to be of a certain age or a certain gender or, or have a certain religious, religious affiliation. Um, I think it definitely opens things up and strengthens the argument, um, that it's a, a community use or a public use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam Leaven, I'm chairman of the board of the El Dorado Baseball Hall of Fame. And I'm not here to complain or protest or anything like that, I, the funds are limited and in fact, there's some things that didn't get funded or didn't get funded fully that I think are possibly more important than, than our project. The reason I'm here is to explain to you why I think that at some point, when funds are available, that this is a project that the city should do. Uh, if Jim McDonald had merely been a longtime coach and athletic record at El Dorado High School, it wouldn't be something that should be, uh, something that the city of El Dorado is, uh, involved in. But, Jim McDonald, uh, started what's now a very successful El Dorado Recreation Department. You know, now it's a, a year-round, uh, program that includes both adults and children. At that time, there was no program, he started the El Dorado Playground Program. And uh, it started with, uh, uh, boys' baseball, later softball was added. Uh, it started with, uh, swimming lessons, uh, Saturday activities, uh, the free show, which at that time, there were, there were, for, for decades, there were two shows a day on Saturday. And the Old El Dorado Theater, which I don't know what it held, eight hundred, a thousand people, it was packed for both showings. And uh, uh, you know, Jim, the, his car, uh, called the Hoopy, the model, Model A. Every kid in town knew that car, uh, they see it kind, driving down the street and they, they'd go running. Uh, he was kind of like a Pied Piper. If, uh, if he'd wanted to have a parade down Central, he could have had fifteen hundred, two thousand kids following him down Central. And uh, I think that the, the story of how the recreation program got started and Jim McDonald and his influence and, you know, not only was he influential with kids, he was influential in the community and getting, uh, business owners to sponsor teams, uh, and uh, getting, you know, support from the community. And he really, I mean, we had the, uh, at one time in the, in nineteen sixties, we had thirty-six, nine and ten-year-old boys teams, we had twenty-four, eleven and twelve-year-old teams. There were, uh, sixteen, I believe, uh, thirteen to fifteen-year-old teams. And there were eight sixteen to eighteen-year-old teams, not counting the American Legion team. I mean, that's just incredible in a town this size. Uh, and it was all because, you know, people just couldn't say no to him. You know, if, if, if he told you you were playing baseball, you played baseball. If he came to a business and said, I need you to sponsor a Pee Wee team this year, we've got more teams, they sponsor. So I think that, that, you know, there's many people in town that did not live here then. There's, there's many of you that weren't old enough to have, have known Jim McDonald. I think it's a story worth telling, what we want to do, we want to expand the Hall of Fame to the east. And it's, it's a project that's already received the approval of the, uh, rec board, pending funding available to do it. Uh, we want to expand it to the east, we'd have a, a, a room there that would be dedicated strictly to Jim McDonald. We'd have the car in there, uh, that, we've got two display cases now that have his memorabilia. And we'd tell the story of, uh, the El Dorado Recreation Program. So, you know, I don't know when funds will be available, but I do think it's, it's something that's worthwhile for the city of El Dorado.
Was that, what was the request for that, the number again, was it thirty?
Forty thousand for the garage.
So it's not thirty-five that's on here, it's forty?
The original request from Donald Stadium was.
Oh, thirty-five, no, okay.
Would be on top of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Steve Waite, three twenty North High, I got a couple of things I want to pass out. These are from the Hall of Fame. If you just kind of look at these, the paper's a little fragile, but, and I'll give you a, the reason they call the Hoopy, that's, that's kind of the name that was, nickname that was given to it, uh, years ago by the kids. It was actually given to Mac by a Wiscott troop, uh, from Yates Center before he came here in nineteen forty-two. Most of the people that probably, uh, you know, have the most recognition of the Hoopy would be fifty years old to ninety years old now. So, a few of you are in that category, but not all of you. I'd like to take a different tack, what we're asking for here is about five percent of the budget. Uh, I don't disagree with any of the work that, that they've done, I think they did a great job. All of those are good things. But I think if we just took five percent off of the whole thing, that would be enough to fund this project. The car has been purchased, uh, has been paid for, uh, is going to be contributed. And uh, and, you know, this is, this is something, that newspaper in nineteen sixty-two, uh, the, the federal, uh, group that's in charge of recreation somehow came to Dumont Stadium and Mac had all the participants, which they weren't just El Dorado kids, they were all across Butler County. He had them file out on Lawrence Dumont Stadium. There were seventeen hundred kids in nineteen sixty-two represented playing baseball and girls' softball. So take that since nineteen forty-two till sometime in the late seventies or eighties. I'd like to ask you to consider, you know, taking five percent of that total and putting it into this project. The team that went all the way and won the national championship, I believe was in nineteen fifty-four. Those gentlemen are going to be in their eighties now, you know. So I'd like to see this happen, not be put off two or three years. It's not an expensive project, uh, you know, we've arranged to get the car running, we've done some repairs to the car. Incidentally, it was always painted green, it was always painted green by the kids that worked in the, for Mac and rec commission. And he always got the green paint and they painted with a brush. And we've restored it, but we've not restored it. We've restored it to the condition it was in when Mac was here. Uh, I would wager that of all the programs that have brought sales tax to this community since nineteen forty-two to now, all the kids that came in with rec and all the parents that came in probably raised more sales tax than anything else that I can think of that's ever happened in this community. And I think a lot of the people are getting to a point, I mean, age-wise, that would enjoy seeing this. It is McDonald's Stadium, that's named after Jim McDonald. So I would respectfully request that you take five percent of that. I don't see a single thing on there that couldn't stand five percent to come off of it and put that back in. So, I, I would request that you consider that and, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you. Lot of kids in the thirty or thirty-five years he was here participated in this. And a lot of people would come back to see this. It, it disappeared for thirty years. It actually was given to Butler County Historical Society. Somewhere along the line, somebody that, you know, I think there's a, there's a generation gap on this project. Those of us who are old enough to really remember, it was your grandma that called me that told me, you can't let that car get out of town. And she saw it, and uh, so, you know, there's a lot of people interested in this. And I think it would get a lot of support. So respectfully ask you to consider that and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So with this forty thousand dollars, what would, what would the garage look like?
It's, it would look exactly like the rest of it. It, it's all been drawn, engineered, you know, designed and everything on a voluntary basis for us. It, uh, it would have the same look, but there'll be, we're calling it a garage, but it's going to have a window on one side where it could be seen day and night. So you wouldn't have to, I mean, anybody that went to a ballgame would see it. But it's about the size of a double car garage. And, you know, I think perhaps we can get it done cheaper than that. But that was the, I mean, Scott did the, the numbers on that for us and that was the number he felt good with. So, I mean, whatever you would give us, I'll go get the rest of it.
So would the Hall of Fame be open to the public at all games or just by appointment?
I'm, I'm not involved with the Hall of Fame. I mean, I just, this was a project that a group of, of us got together, got access to the car, got the car paid for. And now, you know, we'd like, we think that's the proper place for it. But I'm not involved in the Hall of Fame, you'd have to ask the Hall of Fame. Uh, I'm just, I, I'm just a kid that grew up here in the fifties and want to see this happen. And uh, and, and it just can't go away, I mean, it has to. And, and the sooner we could get it done, the better in my mind because many of the, well, I'm seventy-two, I'll be seventy-three. And uh, you know, he, he'd been here six or eight years by the time I was involved in these programs. So, uh, I'd just like to see it as sooner rather than later.
What are the operation hours of the Hall of Fame?
By appointment, we have it open for special occasions. Last year, I had it open for the Broncos Fourth of July, uh, game. It was open for the game and the fireworks and we had probably a hundred people come through that night. Uh, every time El Dorado High School has hosted, uh, uh, regional or sub-state baseball, we've had it open for that tournament. Um, we, uh, it's been open on occasions for, for Butler games. Uh, but as far as regular hours, you know, we're strictly a, a volunteer organization and I'm basically the only one that'll volunteer to go down there and open it up and have to make a living too. So, uh, it's, uh, you know, right now it's limited. But, you know, the Kooch Museum, I don't know how many of you were around when, when it first started, but it started out as, as open only by appointment and it was that way for a couple of decades at least. So, you know, I hope someday that we'll have the funds or the volunteers or both, that we can have it open on, on a set schedule, right now it's, it's not.
So what's that do for a limited basis, um, on having, putting money on this for just limited time? Does it have to be open to the public at all times?
You know, I don't think that there's necessarily a requirement that it be open at all times. I, I think that the test is, and you know, like I said, it's frustrating because it's not a very clear test, but the test is, um, could everyone, could the community benefit from the spending of the funds? So, i- if there, if you see a community benefit in the spending of the funds, then, you know, you can link it to a public purpose.
And the building itself actually belongs to the city of El Dorado.
And we would ensure the exterior.
Right.
It would increase that constantly.
Benefit really is the program, I mean, that is continuing and it's, it's now a department of the city, you know. And uh, so that's really the benefit, it generates, it still generates tons of sales tax. I mean, because of the programs that are presented. Now you have, what, twice as many ballfields as we had back in the fifties and sixties. And, but, uh, this is really the beginning of rec programs. This was written up in Reader's Digest in the late sixties. And uh, and, you know, Mike was called Mr. Playground, so, but we all knew him as Mac. And his Hoopy was interchangeable wherever it was, he was, and that. And his hoopie was interchangeable wherever it was, he was, and that...
I rode in that car. I fell off that car.
Did you paint that car?
No, I never got to paint it, but I... I mean, that's a very vivid childhood memory of mine.
It's an icon. I mean, it's hard to explain if you didn't grow up here or you are of a different generation, but those of us, I mean, it was the icon of all... And we all participated. I mean, it was something that probably, you know, your police report, I'm sure that kept more kids out of... Mac in person kept more kids out of trouble than anybody else because he had us busy. We were busy. So, it would be available. It would be... It wouldn't have to be open for people to see the car. That's the way we designed it, but...
There'll be a bulletproof or shadowproof or whatever, I mean, a window that is very, very difficult to break into so that people can view the car at all times.
And we want to have it where it would run if they wanted to put it in a parade or something. You know, I've got a couple of guys that volunteered to do that.
And that's why it was called a garage, because it will have a garage door on one side to be able to open it up, get the car in, and take it back out if we want to put it in a parade or something like that. As Stephen mentioned, the car being donated, it was donated to the Historical Society. When Mac died, Kenny Fowler and I took it down there. Mrs. McDonald donated it to the Historical Society. And initially, they displayed it along with all of Mac's pictures, which were also donated, which had pictures of every high school team from 1942 through 1971. And then, at some point, they decided that that wasn't something that they had room to display anymore, and they were going to put it in storage, and she decided she wanted the car back. Pictures are still there somewhere in files. And she wanted the car back, and she gave it or sold it to an individual, and when he decided to sell it, fortunately, Steve was able to get it and donate it to the Hall of Fame once we have a place to put it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else supposed to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Move to discussion of the commission here. Any comments or discussion from the commission on the sales tax advisory committee's recommendations?
Tonight, when we were going to vote to accept for consideration, correct? So, nothing's cast in stone tonight.
No, nothing's... Nothing will be permanent.
I took a real walk down memory lane when I went through that. I mean, I found my ball team and my roster in there. No, I think this is a... This is part of the history of our community, and I think it's a great deal, and it all comes down to money. And I don't know... I sure want to consider it. And I will consider it.
What a... Can I... Now, we don't have someone here on behalf of the arena. I guess you... You at the arena?
Yeah.
Just everybody.
There's nobody else here?
I am on the arena committee. Yes, I am.
So, I guess my... I mean, you know, it says that this is... These funds would be used for concept design, drawings, you know, feasibility impact studies, promotional materials. I mean, is this an urgent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is. And that's why I say I'm not... I'm not opposed to any of that. You know, I'm saying, you know, make a motion to do 5% for this. That's probably one of the greatest generators of sales tax possibilities on that list.
Yeah.
The numbers we have seen would astound you, and we've been all over the country. We've been Texas, Oklahoma, you know, Topeka, and looked at arenas. And, of course, with things changing in Wichita, now there's very much a demand, and we have a window of opportunity that is open now. Again, I have no dog in the fight at all. Ron McCune's a good friend of mine. He brought this to me. It's something I thought needed consideration, so he and I started doing, you know, some background checks. Scott's gone with us on two or three of these visits. That, I don't want to see you knock anything out of this. I'm not opposed to anything, but that probably has the greatest sales tax potential generation of anything that's on that list, in my opinion. But, like I say, and it is a window of opportunity with everything that's changing at the Coliseum and all that, and, you know, what we've found, there are so many different venues that I've never thought of. I mean, there's all kinds of horse people. There's all kinds of dog people. I mean, we've... Two places we've gone, we've seen people come in with $150,000 rigs for a dog, for a dog show, you know? It mazes me. But they are keeping these places busy. It's going to create bed tax. It's going to create sales tax, you know? I mean, you just can't even imagine some of the studies we've seen. And, of course, we have to do our own study to see what the feasibility is, but that will bring the numbers back that will... I mean, you know, I mean, we're going to have professionals do this.
Yeah.
But it's their best estimate of what it's going to do for our community. They know what it's done in other communities, but yeah, that's going to be a generator of sales tax, and bed tax and things that are just... It's going to astound you because of the use into that. Scott?
Thank you for that. I mean, that's just what I was curious to hear.
And when you see contingent on being built in El Dorado, I guess the way we foresee this happening is the city being involved in the interviews of a consultant to do the feasibility study, and then more or less the city makes payment from that consultant and the studies on, you know? And say this thing gets built somewhere else in the county, then we would want those funds out.
Yeah, then, as I understand, yeah, whoever the organization is that's doing that within range of the city for that amount, the city, I mean, do a feasibility study and do it countywide so that it is, you know, kind of take the broad look at it, but if it's... And we're willing to step up and make that happen.
Well, yeah.
But if it doesn't land in our community, then we want to be reimbursed for that.
I think we all understand funding for a arena this size needs to come from a county or a bigger population than just El Dorado.
But it also, in that formula, it requires that you have availability of infrastructure, which kind of limits where you're going to put it. So, we're in a good position to, you know, to end up with that, but it is going to have to be supported by the county and be a countywide project. So, you know, you've got to take the proper steps to show, you know, the feasibility of where it even could be. But El Dorado would have the infrastructure, of course, to do that. But it's kind of a... It's a local competition rather than us competing with, you know, Kansas City or something.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Nick, I would share. I think the hoopie and everything has got great heritage, and I don't want to lose some of that story. At this point, I guess I would suggest that we proceed as presented here and then have this discussion as we move through the budget, because we're going to have more discussion on these items as we move through some of the detailed budget discussions anyway.
Oh, and I agree with you 100%.
At that time, we can talk about where else can we find funds or how else can we massage that if it still remains a priority, and it would be in my mind, I think that's a good...
Because I really do. I take the recommendation of our advisory board very seriously. I don't vote against advisory board recommendations, and... But I think we need to consider this and look for maybe for an alternate fund or something.
Something.
Well, and I'd be interested to know if there's even enough interest to maybe do matching, you know? If there was a group that was willing to do half, we did half. I don't... But anyways, I would do...
I think we can continue that conversation outside of this.
And then we continue. I mean, we keep that.
There's a lot of names on some of those ball club rosters.
And as I was reading the newspaper, and I will say I'm not as old as Steve yet, I noticed my old debate coach was there, and Galen Plattenworth's picture was there, and a couple of students or a couple of kids that were in my class are on there, so yeah.
Well, and with, you know, with the project and it having the window, you know, it would be nice because people would be able to enjoy it without the museum having to be open all the time. So, I mean, it's a great project, and I think... I'm with you guys. I'm in agreement that we move forward with the recommendation and that we keep it as part of the conversation as we go through the budget process.
Okay.
I feel the same way.
And Tabitha will add that to our budget discussions.
Yes, you will actually receive your first copy of the proposed 2017 budget here in a couple of weeks, and your first meeting to hear from department heads and outside agencies will be May 11th at 4:00. And so, well, it's coming up quickly.
Well, that...
That's it. I entertain a motion for...
I move to accept for consideration the sales tax advisory committee's recommendations on the use of uncommitted sales tax for 2015.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Go Vandy.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, before we wrap this one up, I just want to take a moment to encourage the public to continue to shop local. Last year was one of our... Was our largest collection year ever, and so, if you shop local, that helps increase this.
Yes. Yeah, good point. Thank you. Next on our agenda is federal fund exchange program. Scott, you're going to talk to us about what we're looking at here.
Yes, Mayor. Mission. The federal fund exchange program is something that the state of Kansas allows cities to do, and what it is, is each community in the state of Kansas is allotted a certain amount of federal dollars for transportation in their communities. In the past, those funds have been held by the state, and the city was able to apply for larger projects. But here in the recent future, we've been able to exchange those dollars, 90 cents for the dollar, to be able to fund projects here in El Dorado. Typically, that's been anywhere from $133,000 to $150,000. Projects that we've done in the past have been bike path extensions, widening the intersection of Vine and Central, the new traffic signal at Haberhill and Sixth Avenue. So, tonight, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of El Dorado and the Kansas Department of Transportation for the proposed projects. The city has had some dollars that have been banked with KDOT, so our total available funds are $336,000 and 336,316. Of that, we would propose 172,000 of that go to cover the city at large cost involving the paving of Griffith Street. We would then ask for funding for Bike Path Phase III Part I, which I'm going to pull a drawing up here for y'all. For some reason, it's not loading. It would be a three-quarter mile extension of our bike path from East Central in the Walnut River, down around the Compost area, up through the Dog Park, and tie back into East Park. We were informed Friday that we did not receive transportation alternative dollars through KDOT to help us with the funding on this, so we're asking you if we can use these federal fund dollars to go ahead and move forward with this. And then, we're asking for $34,000 to help fund the extension of the bike path that serves this addition, and I have a drawing of that as well.
This 336, $336,000 is... You said it's banked. It's in KDOT's coffers, so to speak, and we just need to request it under this program. And they... There isn't an application. It's not competitive. It's just that we're choosing for them to release those funds for this purpose.
And we feel like we need to get it in our hands.
That's what I was going to ask. You sure it's still there?
And we think these are three great projects to use those funds on. With Griffith, that helps reduce our amount that we'll potentially... We'll have to go to bonds on in the future, and that will not support any of the benefit or improvement district cost on that roadway, just to city at large portion. So, the extra pavement thickness, the storm sewer drainage. And then, of course, Bike Pass, we love continuing on with our system. Think it's a great use.
What would we have used that federal fund, those federal monies for otherwise? You know, what were we saving it for?
In the history of El Dorado, as far as my knowledge and Mr. Rensberg's knowledge, El Dorado was never awarded a project utilizing those funds, and they're special dollars, so they would be dollars for like a trafficway. The old way, they used to fund trafficway extensions or major bypasses of cities. Your other available funds now for us to go that route, the trafficways in our future, and by us requesting this, it doesn't limit us from asking either. We could still ask for those funds. So, we feel it's best to get those funds in our hands and spend them here locally.
These funds on a federal level, are these funds typically associated with US highways? We're in this pot because we have US highways through town. Is that kind of why that is?
It's based on fuel tax and population.
This that you're doing, city at large on paving Griffith?
Yes.
There is no benefit to the other landowners?
We did not put that in there. Just because of past precedents, when we've received grant dollars for projects that involve improvement districts, those benefits did not go on to the improvement district just so everyone in town was paying for the same and not getting them, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does, yes.
Okay. You have a question from Scott?
Get our hands on it.
Yeah, I move and make the motion and apply tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute for, and on behalf of the city of El Dorado, request to change federal funds be submitted to the Kansas Department of Transportation.
I second it.
Okay, so moved in second. Any further discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. New business. Hey, this is our chance to talk, and last time, we talked about our committee reports, if you will, or advisory boards, if anybody's had one since then. I have not had anything, so I don't have any report. I guess, Tabitha, what I would like to see on that is if you, under this, you put in here on a new business... I guess, Tabitha, what I would like to see on that is if you, under this, you put in here on our new business, commissioners will give reports from advisory boards on which they serve. At least until we get used to it, could we list all those boards?
Sure.
With this, so that we can get the reminder to do that? But anyway, anybody have any reports to make?
I had an airport advisory last Thursday, but I was attending the Chamber Legislative Dinner. So when I get the minutes on, report next time.
Okay, anybody else?
Youth Commission is going to begin exploring the need or desire for a skating rink in the community, and so we've kind of started the preliminary conversation on that. And then this next Monday night, we'll give them all their marching orders, and hopefully have some feedback before the school year wraps.
Good.
Then, the only other new business I have for, just doing all that in general, is tonight, we christened our new fire truck. And so folks out in the community will see a beautiful red and black, brand-new fire truck, you know, out in the community, and I would just encourage folks, you know, if you see it, go up and take a look at it. It's, we all paid for it. And, you know, I know the firefighters always welcome children going up and checking it out, but, yeah, that's just, you know, a purchase that we decided on two, three years ago, but it's kind of been a process, and updates our equipment, and allows us to serve certain buildings and facilities that we weren't able to, you know, serve before if something bad happens. And so, we can kind of rest easy now, knowing that there's some apartments in some places in the community that if something goes wrong, we can get to everyone and have reliable, reliable equipment to take care of it. So, anyways, congratulations to the community and to our fire department on that.
Very much, and it'll be stationed out at Station Two, which is on Sixth Street, rather than downtown. It fits on the door. Fairly, but it fits rather nicely in the new station, so that's where they're going to store it.
And the only other thing I had, and I know we talked about kind of crisis and all that a little bit last commission meeting, but have we recently, maybe just for public information, mentioned the shelters that are open, and what's open in the case of tornadoes or bad weather?
I believe we did some work during severe weather awareness week, but we will start, we will actually start making sure that that is out there for the public a little bit more now that spring's rolling around, and we're starting to actually see some thunderstorms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had.
I have no questions.
Nick?
I'll just echo what Chase said about the fire truck and tell people, when you, if you get up close to it, there's a few subtle little things about it that make it unique to our community, and see if you can find those on there. I didn't find them, they were pointed out to me by a firefighter, but it's cool. And the only other thing is, I'll just say, because I know he's watching, get well heard. And that's all.
Okay, Kendra? I don't have anything to add tonight, so move on to the manager's report.
I just have a couple of things. This Thursday at 6:00 PM, YMCA, the Chamber of Commerce, is sponsoring an event called Get On Board. We will have three of our boards there, looking, just looking to provide information to the public on our advisory boards, and hopefully recruit some new people. We will be reviewing applications for advisory boards next Wednesday, April 27th, our work session at 4:00 PM. So, hoping to pick up a couple of new applications this Thursday evening at the Y. So, we'd love for the public to come out, though we have twenty-five boards and committees that will be attending, looking for volunteers, so it'll be a good event. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be May 5th at 7:00 AM. Commissioner Wilkinson will be our featured speaker this year, so looking forward to that. And so if you would like tickets, go to the Chamber's website, they're doing that for us as well, so.
You say that was May 5th?
May 5th.
Thank you.
7:00 AM at Civic Center.
I'm unable to make the Chamber's event this Thursday, but I would encourage anybody on the commission to go.
You going to be at the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast?
I'm, it's on my calendar.
I hope so.
As Vice Mayor, you fill in for that.
That's what I was wondering.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Yeah, that scares me.
I will be there.
Of all events for Nick to fill in for.
What are you implying?
You know.
I've seen Nick at church.
Dude, I've been going to church longer than you've been breathing.
I believe that, but not consecutive days.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, anything else?
I actually received a note just now that the Channel Seven slides for our shelters started running today, so...
Awesome.
They are already out there.
And is that something that we can or have, we can put on Facebook, just for the sake of...
We do, we have a couple of slides that we just copied from Channel Seven and put on our Facebook pages, but...
Good, thanks. Anything else?
Lot of discussion about the fire, the fire truck. If you've been out west, you might have noticed the fire training towers has been set, and they're making some finishing touches on that with the fire signs in the city. It's been a good partnership project.
Fire department likes to show off their trucks, so go out anytime.
Okay. Nothing else, and I entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Sure, but we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.